Although Dan got to use this. Yep, I had to go get the gavel. Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, October 15th, the Ides of October meeting for the City Commission. This is a work session. I would like to officially convene the meeting now that I have the official Jim Hall Abernathy Elm gavel. And please do the roll call.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Morrell.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Mayor McGriff.
Present. So we have one item, excuse me, on our work session, and that is to have a discussion and possibly some input later on about the facility that is proposed to be located at 15th and Main Street. So I will ask the city manager to kick it off.
Oh, thank you. Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So tonight we're here to, for the Commission, to have a discussion that was requested for a work session about Caring Place. On the dais, provided some information, I think Evan said maybe he could put it up, it sounds like a phasing schedule that was provided for the project and the costs associated with them, as well as the system development charge estimate that our engineering department generated based on the information that was provided, based on the proposed development. So, you know, I think with that, obviously, I would like to let you know on Monday that we did have our first community court over at the Community Development Department. There, we had three folks go through with the judge. Everything went really well, so it was really a good first proceeding that the judge was able to have with that program. So that has been started, and like I said, they did it on Monday, and I believe the next one will be in November, when they'll have another one for that service that's been created. As part of the discussion, Commissioner Wilson did ask that this come forward, really, you know, what are the opportunities, if any, to talk about Caring Place, what the city could, would be willing to, isn't willing to do in terms of support for the construction of that facility. In my discussions, you know, there's funding being generated through philanthropic measures, donations, funds have been allocated from the state level, the county level, and really, you know, one of the questions that comes up is what is, you know, where's the city on this? You know, is the city supportive, not supportive? Has the city put money in? Is it not willing to? So I think Commissioner Wilson tying this back to the Commission's goals around homelessness has asked for this work session. I'll turn it over to you all.
Yeah, I would like to kick it off by having at least a preliminary discussion with the Commissioners, just to get some understanding of people's concerns or opportunities, whatever you'd like to have a discussion about. So who wants to kick it off? This is where I do not like the silence.
So I obviously, as you know, do have some things to say, but I also know that I've been the most vocal here, and, you know, I requested that we sit down and we have a conversation, and I think part of that is just kind of understanding where you all are at, and so I don't want to monopolize the conversation, I don't want to hammer necessarily on points that I've already meant. I do have things to add, but I'm really kind of curious to know where you guys are at and what your thoughts are, knowing that the Caring Place is coming, it's, you know, being constructed in the community, and what your thoughts are around, you know, the city and how we can support it.
Well, that is what I meant by having a discussion. So I know I've had some conversations with some of you privately, and that's private, not necessarily about anything, any decision or anything to do with anything substantive. So I can go down the line, or I can just call on you. So which would you prefer? Rocky, do you have thoughts?
I do. I think we all do. So I guess I'll start in pretty generic terms, and then we can...
Thank you. Thank you.
And we haven't had, we have not had a lot of conversation about it, so I mean, it is a good conversation to have, however, a lot of it should have happened a long time ago. I think most of us, well, I shouldn't say any, I won't say anything about anyone else. I feel like we were asked about this and our input on this way too late. And I know the county is not the full, the county is a part of this, and I don't know how many situations we've been in with the county where the county likes to have no input from us, do exactly what they want to do, and then later ask for support, and then we have a conversation as a commission whether we want to support it or not, and it usually ends up, well, at least we should at least be involved in supporting it because, you know, it's better to have a say than nothing. And then we still get no say in anything, usually. That's how the county works. It works well for them because they do what they want, and we don't have much of a say. And so there's that feeling where we all know that Oregon City has taken the brunt of helping the region with this problem. It's not that we don't want to help that problem, and we just feel that it should be helped by other cities, and we've talked about the challenge of that. I think it's hard now for us to really understand how much we want to be supportive of something that we had no say in, and that we had no buy-in to. Now that it exists, we're not going to not support it in the fact that it's there, because it's going to be there, and it's going to be built. And I think the work that we're doing with the court is, makes sense, but if the ask is money from this city, and at a substantial amount in some way, I don't know how I would support that, because we've had no say in any of this, and the building is going to be built. And I mean, I think we want to continue to do what we do as a city to support the needs of the homeless and the houselessness in Oregon City, but I think the dialogue should have been started a lot sooner in what this building was going to be and how it influenced the city. I think there's so many benefits to what is going to be there, and we probably figured it would have been, something like this would have been in Oregon City somewhere anyway. I, as someone that lives near Father's Heart, I think the new location is probably a better location, but as a downtown business owner, I have huge concerns, and I know that a lot of people do. We've seen things, you know, that have happened on Main Street that we had big rumors about not being so great or being successful, not, one of which is in the old US Bank building, and that so far hasn't been much of a problem at all, but we had this big rumor that it would be.
Oh, I can tell you about the problems we've had with it.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying that there's, I'm not saying that it's problem-free. I mean, I know that Main Street has changed drastically at times of the night and evenings when you're in downtown. So I, it's a struggle for me to, you know, support it in a hundred percent of a way and fund it in a hundred percent of a way, because we know the issues that that brings, and we are supporting it in so many other ways, by just the services that we have to offer as a community from our police station that no one else is contributing to, you know, and how to balance that, I think, is a very fine line. I just wish that the city would have been more involved, the county, in having a discussion of how we got here. So that's where I'm at now. I want to, but I don't really understand the full Commission. I think in the past, we've had comments as a Commission that we were not satisfied with the involvement at the beginning, that we had concerns about how much to support the facility in general, but I don't know, there's a lot of time that's passed since that started, and so I guess it's good that we're having this conversation. I guess I'd be wary of, you know, full launch into full support when we don't really know what's going to happen fully with it and how much involvement we want to get into it, but I'm pretty open to listening to everyone, too.
Thank you. It's much appreciated. Michael?
Part of me wants to be upset about the fact that we weren't involved to the degree we wanted to be. But I don't carry grudges, and so I'm forcing myself to get over that. I wish it had been different. It's not. Where do we go from here? And I think all of us realize we are better off being involved, supporting what's going on there, what will happen there, as opposed to trying to ignore it, because there are going to be impacts. We know that. So where do we go from here, I guess? And in terms of support, if there's a way that we could, obviously, our big concern is the impacts on downtown, the impacts on our residents. If there's a way that we can financially support programs or security enhancements to help minimize those impacts, and we can find the money, that's something I think I could support, because our job at this point is to make this work in our community and minimize the impact. So if there's a way we can do that, if there's, like I said, a security program, more involvement from our police department, extra staffing, whatever it might, whatever it might be, that kind of financial support, I think I could consider. Helping build the building, that's going to be a little further reach for me, although I do think it's a better location. Way back when, I voted against a conditional use permit for Father's Heart, because that is just the wrong location. And the fact is, if you look at a map, this location is no further, or excuse me, no closer to the center of downtown than Father's Heart is. It got promoted, unfortunately, as being on Main Street. I think if somebody, I think if it had been, it's on 15th Street, it might not have become such a big deal. And I've had several conversations with Mr. Fowler over the last few years about the vacuum of information and how people filled it with misinformation, and now that's part of what we've got to do, because people will fill vacuums with misinformation, and they did. And part of what we have to do together is now get over that and figure out how we can move forward.
Adam?
So I'm still having a hard time with the concept of us providing financial support, whether that be in the form of direct funding or SDC waivers or what have you, for a project that we've had no input on the design of. I worry that if we can't be bothered to be reached out to earlier on, what that pretends in the future for that working relationship and an ability or inability to maintain open lines of communication. I keep coming back to the fact that the proponents and the developers of this project have been operating under new state laws that are, that give them a lot more leeway in doing things without local approval, and they have been operating under that regulatory regime, and that's their prerogative, because that's state law now. And so they went ahead and they went forward with their process without consulting the city in a way that I would have preferred. And it's only now when there's a realization that maybe city buy-in does matter for this to be successful, that it seems like those entreaties are being made with the city, and I have a hard time with that. We are at the point after the demolition of the building that was on the site, we are at the point after the fact that the designs have been completed and that the ground has been broken, and so it feels hollow to me to reach out at such a late point when we're just now realizing, okay, maybe we do need this partnership to work, and it doesn't build goodwill between the two organizations when it appears that way. And beyond all of my issues with the process that brought us here, or the lack thereof, I really have a hard time with the precedent of funding a program or a project that has not already been budgeted for in our biennial budget. And this is something I bring up every single time when we have conversations about a pet project, if we can find the funding. It reminds me of when I voted against giving funding for the float for the grand floral parade, and it wasn't because I didn't support that and what it would do for tourism, it was because we have grants and we have things that we budget for. That's the reason why we have a budget, is when we feel like we have extra funds that we can disperse toward community organizations that will do good work in Oregon City, that we have those public engagement processes in the forms of grants and other committees where people can get involved. I'll echo what Commissioner Smith said. Our city goes above and beyond other communities in the county and in the region when it comes to proposing solutions, real solutions, to the homelessness crisis, and I've heard people say that we're doing nothing. And to say that we're doing nothing is false, and it's belittling to our staff who is out there every single day, our park staff, our library staff, our police department, who are out there every single day bearing the brunt of this regional issue. And they deserve a lot of credit for the things that we have asked of them in recent years because of the evolving role of what cities do in response to homelessness. It's been brought up that we need to support this because it addresses one of our goals, but I think it's also important to balance that with the potential of how it negatively impacts other goals, the tourism and economic development, the public safety aspects that are also in our goals. And there are plenty of community organizations, both in Oregon City and throughout Clackamas County, who are also doing good work that address our city goals, but we do not fund them, and to the extent that we do provide funding, again, it's through our existing grant programs that we have, that we set up through a robust public engagement process in our budgeting. So for me, this isn't about trying to oppose any solutions to homelessness. For me, it's about demanding the transparency and responsibility that I think that we deserve and that our taxpayers deserve. I grew up volunteering with the Father's Heart through my church. I know that they do very important work. I'm always telling people in the community that there's no one that I trust more than Brandy Johnson and the work that she does for the Father's Heart and loved one. And I know that, I know that Dan has a personal stake in making sure that it's successful because of the proximity to his businesses, and so I understand that that personal stake is there in addition to him just wanting to address this issue, and I appreciate that. I was really excited early on in this process when it was just conceptual, for those of us who were on the Commission at the time, we were invited to see presentations about just the vague ideas of what it could be, and I was really excited about that. But I remember seeing in those meetings that if this is to be successful, there really needs to be community buy-in and community engagement. With all that being said, I do wish the best for this project, because it is going to happen, and their success is going to be our success, and that success is going to be downtown Oregon City's success. But for me, public funding requires public input, and my standards for that involvement have not been met. And so until a demonstration of that goodwill and collaboration can present itself to us, I cannot support city funds going toward this project. And I don't think that if we were to not support funding in whatever form that might be, that it's us ignoring it necessarily, because either way, we're going to step up. Our police department is going to step up either way to make sure that they're preserving the peace and keeping the public safe. It's a matter of, for me, it's a matter of whether we can trust that that communication and engagement is going to occur in the future when it hasn't happened now.
Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a lot of talk, you know, not only within Oregon City, but within the region and, you know, the country that, for that matter, about houselessness, about what to do and what can be done and how to support. I do agree that Oregon City, we are doing things. We are, you know, we have some amazing staff that are working to support or communicate with this, and at the same time, when we hear from the public, whether it's, you know, in conversations they have with us, when they see us, emails they've sent to us, Facebook posts, it's not enough. The efforts that we're making, noble as they are and as hardworking as our staff are, it's not enough. And what I do see is the Homeless Solution Coalition of Clackamas County taking action. They are doing something. It's not talk, it's not acknowledging the issue and saying, what do we do? It's action, and it's substantial action. It's a sizable project. I wasn't here on the Commission when these conversations started. I think that everyone here has some valid... I think that everyone here has some valid statements that they've made of, you know, this sizable project going into the city and feeling left out of that process. I think that's valid. That being said, when we talk about city funds or, or support, however it is from the city, we do have a responsibility to our taxpayers. I fully agree with you on that. And it's been clear to me that our city is craving solutions. They're begging something to be done and I see something that's being done. We hear about the poor location for the Father's Heart. I agree, it's a terrible location. It's moving. Community court, we talked about, you know, Adam, you brought up not having any say in the design of the project. I hear what you're saying. And also, we're looking at moving community court into this building, which is going to have a lot of positive impacts, right? Decrease no-shows for court, if you're moving court to where the people are, that's going to increase the likelihood they're going to attend. I fully believe that's going to have an impact on our law enforcement, that they're going to have less calls, less no-shows for court, less, forgive me, you know, Chief Davis, I'm using the wrong term, less bench warrants, less, you know, kind of seeking these people out that are no-showing because we're putting the services where they are. I am very aware through this last budget that we went through, we are not in a position where we have excess cash to hand out. And I understand what you're saying about going through the normal processes of, you know, requesting funds through grants. I'm also going to argue this is a little bit different. This is a substantial, sizable project. I brought it up before. I, I think there are options that don't involve direct financial contribution from general fund dollars from urban renewal. I know that's a separate commission where that discussion gets held, but I, I do believe that that conversation has merit because it does address blighted property. I don't think anybody can argue that the Miles Fiberglass Building was anything but a very blighted property. And while it in itself wouldn't raise the tax bases, I have a hard time believing that improving the property wouldn't positively impact the tax values of the properties around it. I guess what I'm trying to say at the end of the day is this is a solution and I, I don't know what else we would want. Like what, what, what's the alternative that we as a city would do to provide solutions that our community is asking for? We have somebody who's sees the need, they are taking action and they're doing it. And I think that support from the city goes a long way, not only in helping support the project come to fruition, but the messaging itself, saying, we hear you, this is a meaningful project that the city is asking for, is solving or working to solve issues that our residents are asking for. And so by being able to say Oregon City is behind this project, more than just providing law enforcement to, you know, provide security or things like that, I think that means something. I'll leave it at that.
I think all of you know that for the last 13 years, and I say that underline, I have been trying to facilitate conversations between the Father's Heart and the neighborhood. Some days it goes very well and other days it does not go well. And I will have to say that while I can't put myself in the shoes of somebody experiencing a mental health crisis or somebody who is without a home, I am empathetic to it, but I'm also empathetic to the fact that we have a group of residents who have not had a peaceful day for 13 years. And I don't know exactly what the answer is to try to balance that. I don't know if moving is going to completely solve that issue, but when people get to a point to where they are selling their homes and they're moving because they feel there is no hope. I get asked all the time about this particular situation with houselessness, mental health issues, and I, and I have to say to them honestly, in my opinion, Oregon City is not in the homeless business. We are part of a solution, but we are not the only entity. And I've told you many times that, you know, when I started working for the city, this was an issue that we were facing, same, same issues are still here. What I get concerned about is that the entire issue that we're facing with mental health, lack of housing is beyond the capacity of any one jurisdiction to deal with. It is not Oregon City's responsibility to solve this problem. It is our responsibility to work cooperatively with others to try to manage this problem. And in some cases, it's not a problem. Because problem, I think, brings a lot of negativity to it because it's something to be solved. I think there's just so many different twists and turns with regard to this issue. Rocky is aware that I expressed my extreme dissatisfaction to former Chair Tootie Smith about the fact that we were left in the dark. And again, I agree with you, that's water under the bridge, but it still remains the fact that it shows a pattern by the county, which is not good. And, you know, we've been doing everything we can to try to minimize some of that so that we are, that at least we get some notice. And when I asked about it, I said, I don't think that our city manager's phone number is unlisted, you could have picked up the phone. You didn't have to talk to us, but you could have picked up the phone. He's available. I do, like Scott said, you know, we have a responsibility to our community. I get both sides. We have to do everything we can or please get them out of town. You know, it's, I hear, hear it all. I will honestly have to say that after having looked at this issue through some of our partners at the League of Oregon Cities, the Caring Place is only one part of the solution. What we don't have is the place for people to go. So they go there, they get services, where do they go? There's no transitional housing, there's no low-barrier housing, there's no housing for them to go into after they've been in transition housing. So this is, this is, this is one little bite of the apple. I'm not saying that it's this coalition's responsibility, but I mentioned, I said, there's a piece of property adjacent. Create a facility for eight beds, five beds, whatever beds it is, so that people have the opportunity to transition. So I, I have concerns, I want this to be successful, but I see that there's parts of it that are missing. And that's the big problem, is that it's got to be a whole package. It can't just be one thing. And again, I don't think that we have the capacity as a city. What I would be interested in knowing, and I know this is not, you know, I know Matt is around, he's looking up, he said, oh, she should mention my name again. Everybody's mentioned the things that we are already doing. We were the first city to have, have a homeless liaison officer. Everybody has followed our lead. We were the first to have a mental health specialist. We have a caseworker. You know, if we had more money, I'd say get, you know, three or four more of those people. We have all the time and energy in court, police, parks. Add all that up, you know, I don't know if we could come up with a number, but I'm sure we could throw something at the wall and we'd be pretty darn close. That has been our contribution from this community. That is what we are doing. It may not be exactly what other people are doing. I've been asked, well, why don't we buy this piece of property and put some housing on it? Why don't we buy, do this? You know, again, it's not just these little incremental pieces, it's got to be, and I don't know how we work together with the other jurisdictions to have some overall plan to where we're all contributing towards solving, you know, this problem. I know the county's building some new mental health thing, but where is it? It's, it's not even, you know, it's off somewhere else. There's going to be some transition housing in Milwaukee. Again, it's, I, I just see we need a bigger package. I think we have been contributing to the benefit of this particular issue in a lot of ways that our community may not see, but we know that that's happening. We know that it's out there, we know, I mean, you know, every time there's a call, every time there's an outreach, every time there is, somebody comes in here for court, again, they're going to have the community court, which we just started. So we have made, we have been spending a lot of city dollars on dealing with this particular I think I tend to lean towards what you were saying, Michael, about a way to further participate if that's where we want to go. I'm just going to see what, I wrote some notes of what you said. It was, you talked about security enhancements in other areas. One of the things that I have heard from the neighbors is that while there is security on the lot at 12th and Washington, it's the off-site impacts that cause the problems. And since they're funded to secure that piece, they don't go past there. And then it falls on our police department or mental health specialists to deal with those off-site impacts. And that's, that's what I have a concern about, no matter where this is, there's going to be those off-site impacts. And how do we minimize that? I know in my good relationships with the director, that they have a concern that they know who the people are that they're serving that are, we could say, Oregon City-centric. That's not the case anymore. There's many, many more people that are not Oregon City-centric that are coming, don't want to know what the requirements are, don't want to know what the rules are, and that's where, you know, 99.9% of our issues come from. Because the people that are from this area are not the ones that are causing the problems. So I am going to ask for some more suggestions on fleshing out what you had asked, that you had suggested, Mike. I think we might have some comfort with something like that as opposed to, again, we don't have anything budgeted and I, you know, I don't think we can do a flat-out allocation. I, I just don't think that that would be supported.
May I?
Please.
Okay.
This is a discussion.
I appreciate, I just.
It's talk amongst ourselves, you know?
I get it, I just don't want to, you know. With the Caring Place, it is not, I feel it's unreasonable to expect one singular organization to fix the quote-unquote problem. So you say, hey, we need a, a package, we need a, a full solution. So I, I will say, I do agree that we need shelter beds. Like I am very comfortable saying that we need a place that our law enforcement can bring people on the weekends and bring people at night and help support people. We do need shelter beds. Whether that is through the Caring Place or not, neither here nor there. I just, I think what concerns me personally is this idea, without being directly said, but that I feel is like we've done enough. We've already done some things, we've done enough. And I don't feel that that's true. I don't think, I, I can't go to bed at night and say, you know what, when it comes to homelessness, we have a city, we've, we've done enough, we're doing enough.
I can't say that either.
Right. So my question comes back to, well, what do we do? Because I don't have a better solution than what the Caring Place is coming. I mean, it is, it is doing what we need in our community.
Again, only part of it.
But it's, but again, yes, it's part of it, but are we to wait for an all-encompassing solution that like delivers on every metric of solving homelessness? It's homelessness, that's silly, right?
I don't think I'm going to be able to live that long.
I, I, I don't think I'll live that long, right? We're dealing with like national systemic issues, right? This is not something we're going to fix. But again, to say that like, hey, well, we're, we're doing enough, I think is irresponsible.
So did you hear anybody say we were doing enough?
No.
Okay, we said we were doing things, pressure.
We did.
I'm just looking at the goals, so that's.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
I, 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 I just, I, I feel very strongly that we, we have a responsibility. We have a responsibility to our constituents, our community, and the fact that a overwhelming majority of people who are seeking services are Clackamas County residents, and that is just the nature of, the court is here, the county jail is here, all the services are here. We in our city have, I believe, the highest number of unhoused individuals of any city in Clackamas County. Yeah, the burden is on us to a degree. And we may not like it, I know our, our community doesn't like it, but we also have a responsibility to do something about it. I'm just going to throw out, Tony said we have a windfall of, not a windfall, that's not the right, that's not the right word, please.
Don't use that word.
I'm sorry, that is not the right word.
We do not have a windfall.
We don't have a windfall. We, we do have some funds that we were not expected to have after reconciling the budget. Now, I'm not saying we use $900,000, was that about the number? I'm not saying we use $900,000 and give it to the Caring Place. But do we use some of it? 20, 25, 30, 50, I don't know. Can we? Yeah, I think we can. Again, Urban Renewal has lazy, to quote Mr. O'Donnell, lazy money, $12 million sitting there. It seems silly to me to just have that money sitting there not doing anything. I think that's an easy way to not directly pull money from the city budget and look at grants for whether it's SDCs or, or permitting fees, right? I am curious, we have representatives from the Caring Place here, I'm curious what their concerns are, how they feel the city could meaningfully contribute, even when it comes to security, right? What, what are you guys doing for security and where's the, where's the gap that you see? So if that's the conversation, we have people here that can speak to that.
Sure, when, when we're ready.
And I think when we're ready, I think that we should give them the opportunity to do so because more information is better than less.
Thoughts?
Yeah, so, thank you. For me, this isn't a question of whether we're doing enough because we're never going to be doing enough. And we're, we always need to find those ways to do more because that is what we were elected to do. We were not elected to just be a representative, we were elected to lead and to help try and solve problems. So I absolutely agree with that. For me, it isn't a question of that, it's a question of what the role of municipal government is. And so I've had plenty of people email me about the, the homeless issues that we deal with, as has been alluded to, and as I know, we all have been emailed about. I've also been emailed about the war in Ukraine. And I tell those people that I share those concerns that you just emailed me about too.
But we can't do anything about the war in Ukraine. That's, that's a ridiculous comparison, I'm sorry.
I would not say that it's a ridiculous comparison because you didn't even let me finish talking.
I apologize.
So the point that I was trying to make is that when you look at what different levels of government do, the federal government, they deal with things that we as a local government do not deal with. And historically, when it's come to housing, we need to understand what our role as a local government is. And so that's the point that I was trying to make and I, I wish you hadn't interrupted me to, to make that comment. I, I recognize the comment that you made earlier about you think that this is different because it's a substantial investment and that makes it different from something that we would have talked about in the budgeting process. I would argue the exact opposite, that for those substantial investments, so those are the things that we most. the things that we most need to be talking about in our initial budgeting conversations. Again, getting back to the emails that people have, have sent to us demanding solutions, I have a really hard time believing that if we were to respond to all of those people who reached out to us and said, "Look at this project," that they're going to be like, "Yes, that's what I meant when I emailed you and said this." I have a really hard time believing that. We've talked about how we haven't had any input into the design of this, apart from the community court aspect. And for me, that was the part where we were taking a stake in this project and its success. And, and again, getting back to the urban renewal, the reason why we have those restrictions on urban renewal is because of how poorly those dollars have been spent in the past. And I have a really hard time believing that investing those dollars into a project like this that will not produce return, the increment, that that will build any more goodwill with the people that we are trying to convince, that this is a strong economic development tool.
Michael, can I add anything? You've got the whole situation lined up with your comment earlier, right? I can see the wheels turning.
I, I do agree with what Commissioner Marl just said about urban renewal. Yes, it will be a less, it will be an unblight, I won't say less blight, because it's going further than that. It will be unblighting a block which was blighted, true. But that's the only checkbox of urban renewal that it does hit. It can't impact property values around it, because those are limited to 3% a year. If that was going to go on the tax roll, then that would get reassessed, but it's not. So I don't see it as appropriate for urban renewal, for the reasons Commissioner Marl As far as the letters, I, I'll say, between letters and conversations, when the topic of the Caring Place comes up, I'm going to say it's, it's pretty close to 50/50, to this is a great idea, this is a facility we need, to if you build it, they will come, we're going to create a mess. And I hear both. And honestly, I think, I hear it in about equal measures. It's a, it is a facility that our, our greater community needs, more than just Oregon City. And shelter beds are something that our greater community needs desperately, and affordable housing, all those things. But, you know, we run into the fact that just structurally, we are always going to have more than our proportional share because of all the county facilities that are here. And so how do we pay for it? Do we need to have more than our proportional share of the facilities? Yeah, probably so, because that's where the people are. But can we afford to pay for more than our proportional share? That's where, that's where the rub comes in. So. I think that's all I've got for now.
Yeah, I don't know what the proportional share is, and again, if I misstated it, I'm not saying that we don't do anything about the Caring Place while we wait for the other pieces. The other pieces have to be somewhere in place, and that's where we have to put some pressure on the county. They, they turn down, for whatever, let me just say dumb reason, to not create transitional housing when they know that that was a need. We can't, we have to go back and revisit that. We don't control that. We have to influence that and say, we need this to be throughout the county, in West Lynn, in Lake Oswego, in part of Tuolumne that's in Clackamas County, in the, in the rural areas where the services need to be where the people are. The services that, you know, are here are, you know, are here for some reasons, but they could be better utilized so that we don't end up bearing the brunt. And that's, that's where the balance comes from, you know? Oregon City has borne this particular burden since, you know, the early 70s, is when things started happening. And again, stuff out of our control. And I get back to what Commissioner Marl said, you know? What is the role of a municipal government? And that's why I've told people, I said, "We are not in the homelessness business. That is not our responsibility to create things and, you know, to provide housing to do this." That's not, that's not our role, and that's clearly roles of other jurisdictions. And again, that's where we have to influence. But again, you're right, no matter how much money we put into this with the things we're already doing, it's probably not going to be enough. And so we have to keep working at it, and working at it, and working at it, and working at it. And, you know, for every success there is, there's, you know, two or three relapses. And I know I, Dan told me this story about this person he'd been working with for over six months, got the person into housing, got them services, it was great, all of that. Person lasted two days and came back. I mean, I was just absolutely devastated when I heard that. I think he was too, it was just weird. But again, I'm not in that situation, and what I know about it is something I'm still learning about, and I'm continuing to learn about it. I, I would, again, I'm not going to support a direct allocation, because I think we have to sit down and figure out, if we do have some additional money, we have deficits elsewhere in our budget that we need to fill those gaps first. We have aging facilities that we need to put money into, more money, you know, we don't have enough. And maybe that's where some of that money has to go to. I mean, that's, that's for stuff that's already here, that our community is already relying on, that our community has an expectation that we are going to, you know, not keep putting a Band-Aid on the pool, and we're going to get cleaned up on our, you know, parks maintenance, get a little ahead of that. We're going to make sure that, you know, the bathrooms are not continually being destroyed every other week. So I think that that is a, it's a larger conversation about where our deficits are and where that money, if it's truly there, where that needs to go. And I think that that conversation has to be had before we start talking about giving out money for other things that, as you indicated, that we hadn't really anticipated. Because it's really all about the rest of our community, whether they, you know, love it, hate it, or whatever. Rocky, I'm down back to you again.
I don't think any of us think we're doing enough, but I know we're doing way more than any other city in Clackamas County. And so why aren't they writing checks? We have grants that we say, "Oh, you live a block outside Oregon City, we're not funding that grant." Right? How these cities need to contribute just as much as we are. We are contributing so much in so many ways, as we all discussed. But here's the other thing that I, I'm concerned about. We know what we're doing in terms of city services right now to the way Father's Heart is right now. We don't know what the change in location and the change in size and the change in the services being consolidated are going to affect downtown or anywhere else in the city or our police department, we don't know that. And so if we have money in the budget that has not been accounted for, I mean, in our budget, we have, like you said, this money, we, we've, we're coming in under budget so far. Well, then that means, well, wouldn't that be a great idea to kind of have some money to know in the future what, what we are reacting to? We have cut funding to certain things, and Downtown Association, which we fund to some degrees, cut funding to some of their things, one of which was the Clean Team, I think, which they've, they've cut.
No, it's still there.
Okay.
I saw it today.
But not to the same, I don't know, to the same degree, no.
It's a part-time position.
But that, that's something that is a super important program, that could be part of a conversation on how we enhance things downtown to mitigate some of these issues. But how do we really know what those issues are yet? I'd hate to say, oh, we're going to, you know, contribute a certain amount to the programming or the building or whatever, and then realize that, oh my gosh, this money could have been used in different ways because of this, once it's up and running, you know? Is it bringing more people in than we thought? And is it bringing more people outside of the Clackamas County region even, to this place? We know that it's bringing people in outside of Oregon City, and how much of that is the city, Oregon City's responsibility? But Lake Oswego isn't writing a check, West Lynn isn't writing a check.
They're driving their people.
And yet, every time these people, all these people come to Oregon City, they're using our streets, they're using our police department, they're using our services beyond just the Father's Heart. And so that is a huge expense. So are we doing enough? No. But we're going to be doing far more than we ever thought we'd be doing, just the fact that it's moving and just the fact that it's expanding the way it is. I, I would like to see the impact and get a feel for what that is before we, I mean, I think we can, we can mitigate some of the issues that we know are going to come, with businesses on Main Street and things that are in the neighborhood and things that we know that are a problem, you know, that have been a problem in the neighborhoods. I think we can get a, a start on preparing for that. Once the facility's up and running and we know the way that it's going, and we hear back from the police department on the things that are happening and the successes and the failures that are happening, then I think it's a better place for us to have a dialogue. And that'll be another goal session, where we can say, "This is a massive problem, and we didn't know this was going to be a problem." Or, or maybe this was a bigger, we thought it was going to be a bigger problem, now it's not as big a problem as we thought. We don't know that. And so I think we need to be really careful about how much money we can commit and focus on things we know are an issue now and as it, as it goes. And hopefully that dialogue, as the partnerships build in, in the coalition and beyond that, you know, we'll have more discussions about whether to contribute more. If other cities realize that they do need to be a bigger part of it, then I'm sure we will have a conversation about how to match that or how to contribute more. But we're not seeing that. At least, I don't think we're seeing that.
Are there other cities that serve on the county coalition? I mean, just from what you've seen.
Oh, no.
No. Yeah, see, that, they need to be at the table. Go ahead, Adam.
So getting to part of what Commissioner Smith said about the services over the years that we have had to cut because of budget shortfalls, part of those cuts that we've had to make to services like parks and recreation, infrastructure, is because we have put the response to homelessness as our number one priority and have funded it as such through our budgets, through the, through the avenues that we have, mainly being public safety and the police department. So I absolutely agree with what Commissioner Smith said, because when we're looking at a potential for spending some dollars that we weren't expecting, it's important to realize the, the things that have already been cut, because we have been prioritizing this issue more than any other city in the county. So I, I would be open to having conversations about what those dollars could be used for, because obviously that needs to be a very open and public process. But we do know that there are many needs that we have already. But if we go through this process and they're able to, to open and get everything built and we're able to see how it affects everything on the ground with the businesses and with public safety and just the general feeling of downtown, that I feel is when it would be appropriate for us to look into the, the economic incentives, the, the public safety issues that are within our wheelhouse as a municipal government. I mean, getting back to the example I used earlier, I, the federal government does not expect me to have any substantial say on national security, just as I don't have any expectation for them to have any say on what we do in Chapin Park. It, it really gets back to what we as local governments have control over. And, and that's what it's going to keep coming back to for me.
Well, you were asking, I have a list of like six things already, and I know we curtailed budgets because we didn't have the funding. And so I think, again, we have to, we have to look at this in a more well-rounded process and a well-rounded look, not just cherry pick. So I'm going to give you all about till 7:10, if you'd like to come up and say anything. But I'm not opening it up to everybody else. So Dan, John? And I know where there's going to be more conversation by us, so.
Testing. Hi, Dan Fowler, Oregon City. Thank you all for your honesty and, you know, your openness. There's a lot of things that were said I'd like to dialogue about, so I guess my request would be, it'd be great to have a time when we could just talk, because there's a lot of information.
Let's see how it goes.
Pardon?
Let's see how it goes.
Well, I think dialogue is good at any time.
I agree. That's what I'm saying, let's see how it goes.
What I would like to say in terms of what we really want is your support, your verbal support. We're working hard to help, and I guess I wonder, I sit here and wonder, is the perception of this place in your minds something that is going to help our community or hurt our The issue's here, the people are here, the nonprofits are here. We're not really doing anything new. The whole idea, the first charge that we had was to help get Father's Heart out of a neighborhood. And we took that charge seriously. And we looked and we found a place. And while we found a site, we thought, well, if we're going to build something, why don't we build something that is effective in a broader way than just a shelter? And so we scoured and went, a lot of research, literally all over the United States, and we looked at models. And the model of collaboration and cooperation among service providers, especially medical and behavioral help with any facility, along with workforce training, i.e. a coffee shop, and with expungement and community court services, was a model that really was working in San Diego, in San Antonio, Texas, and others, in Medford, Oregon, in a clinical model. So this is, we've done a lot of work to get a facility that, in our view, is going to make it better, not worse. And remember, the nonprofits that are here are here already. We're bringing them together to be more efficient and more effective in their work. So our simple, our, really our request is, we want your support in our efforts. We want your words of support. In terms of some of the ideas you've had, they're the same ideas that we have. We have a, a plan to go to the other communities and ask. I think that's a great idea. We, we will do that. One of the reasons why we want, and quite frankly, you know your budgets, I haven't looked at the budgets, I know it's tight, but it would be nice to have something, and I'm going to tell you why. We're now in a capital campaign, and we're raising funds. And almost every single large donor that I talk to says, "Well, I see here, the county gave you this, and the state gave you this, what is the city doing?" And I'm not saying that you're not doing anything, because I agree with all the things you said about the services you are delivering. But in their minds, in that donor's minds, it's what are you doing with the contribution? I'd like to check that box. Quite frankly, I don't, I'd want it to be the most you can do, but what you really can do. And I don't care if it's $10,000, or 20, or 5, but I want to be able to say, this city is doing something. And especially if we're going to ask other cities to do something. If you're not doing something, it's hard to ask them to do, not do something. So there's a lot more that, you know, I'd like to say. I know that we're not the only ones doing things. I know that we're not the only ones doing things. There's things going on in Sandy, Malala, the hub and spoke, the whole loved one that's going to be stationed here, goes to those communities, and works with those communities on what their needs are. Why? Because we want to, we don't want the homeless in those communities having to come here. It's a way to have that prevented. So there's just so much that I want to share. There's a facility in Milwaukee already, 23-hour facility for the police to take people to. There's a mental health, the Pamplin Media, the Pamplin Media Building in Milwaukee Expressway. 39,000 square feet is being remodeled right now into a long-term mental health facility. The elementary grade school in Clackamas along I-205, Oak Clackamas Elementary, six and a half acres, is being repurposed into transitional housing and a recovery center. So there's a lot going on in the various communities, it's not just here. We're just a piece of it. Some of your comments are right on. I agree with a lot of what was said, but I think there are further dialogue, and just communicating can go a long way. But any level of support, both with words and finances, would help. I'll add just one last thing. It's important now, we have, we just had a successful gala this last weekend, and we raised nearly $400,000 from this community that will be matched. We have a generous matching donor that has given us, the next $7 million we raise will be matched. So every dollar you give is doubled. We already have, another individual's given a million dollars towards that match. So we're on our way, and we really value your support. I value any and all of your ideas, but I want to work together to make this the best we can for the community.
Don't forget to have to identify yourself, even though we know who you are.
Okay, I'm on. Thank you so much. I'm John Duke, I'm the Executive Director of the Homeless Solutions Coalition, Clackamas County. And I agree with everything Dan said. I can't add a whole lot more to that. I have a couple points I wanted to say. I'm in the same camp as Commissioner Wilson, I appreciate everything that you said. But as I listen to all of you talk today, I also agree with all of you. Commissioner Marle, I agree with the role of government that you have outlined, and looking at the budget restrictions that you're facing, I totally understand where that's coming from. As Dan pointed out, we are moving ahead with the funding of this building. The money that we're seeking from the city is more symbolic than it is going to take us over the top. I know you can't give a lot, because things are tight, but your support moves way more weight than the money that you give us. And it says something when your own city is not supporting the work that you're doing. And that just is not a message we want to have, because we are here for Oregon City. And Mayor McGriff, when you were talking about the solutions that are necessary, it's not, the Caring Place is going to do a lot, we've got all kinds, we're going to have a clinic there, we're going to have treatment there, we're going to have a community court there, we're going to have a coffee house, that's going to be workforce development, we're going to have over 100 employees that are going to be, a lot of them like doctors and healthcare professionals, that are going to be eating in the establishments around here. So they will have a positive impact. But we are part of a bigger system. What the county is calling a recovery-oriented system of care, is all of those facilities that Dan is talking about, and those facilities are connected with us. We're only one part, we're like the mouthpiece, that folks can move from where we are to the rest of the system. There needs to be shelter. We totally agree with that. And we're not going to, Caring Place is not going to be a shelter, today's shelter, but we will be working with all the other providers, and the county staff, and the county government, and the commissioners, and most certainly the city, to see if we can get shelters located. And shelter location in Oregon City will certainly be something that Oregon City should be involved in. Do we want to have it? Where do we want to have it? But there needs to be shelter all over the county, there needs to be shelter in all the places that Dan outlined, things like Veterans Village and others, all over, that needs to be there in order to move folks from camping in the woods to stable housing somewhere. And we're going to be doing that, that's part of what we're doing. So I just want to say that I loved this conversation, and I know Dan was twitching, it's like, it's a little tough, but I don't think it was tough. I think you guys are all dead on, you're right in on it. And if you can't give us very much this time around, we're in it for the long haul. We're going to be working with you. Your idea, Commissioner Mitchell, of working with law enforcement as a way to maybe provide some help, and the idea that you had, well, yes, they're providing security on-site over at Father's Heart right now, and we will at our place too, it will be totally secure, that's not going to be an issue, and we can cover that cost, your help would be wonderful. But the surrounding neighborhoods, that's beyond our jurisdiction, we have no legal authority to even do that, but the city police do. And maybe there's a way with the counseling staff that you have on the police, maybe there's a way of addressing that in such a way that it's not all hammer coming down, but that is effective in working in those communities, in the neighborhoods, to mitigate any kind of off-site problems that come out of it. That's our future. I really look forward to working with you guys, whatever it is that happens going forward, like where the next initiative is, we're part of Oregon City. Thank you for listening to us tonight.
Thank you for letting us speak.
I appreciate that. One thing that I'm really worried about, that's completely separate from this project, is the substantial amount of cuts that the county is making to its behavioral health and mental health services that the Oregonian recently reported on. And I was talking to someone in the back before this, I was surprised that the Oregonian even covered local news anymore, but, so I really appreciate it that they did, because I probably wouldn't have known otherwise. And so I'm really nervous about the fact that that is going to have a direct impact on what we do, regardless of if we partner or support this Caring Place complex. It's just going to have an impact on every other service that our police department provides, because relying on the county is such a big part of how we get those different continuums of support. I also want to say that regardless of if this city, as a government, decides to contribute financially, it's important to remember that Oregon City residents are paying the metro tax, if they make $125,000 a year, or $200,000 jointly. They are paying the metro supportive housing services tax, which has given, was it $10 million, or $10 million to this project? And so Oregon City residents are providing for our neighbors, for our community, and I'm really proud of that. And I appreciate the clarification about, it's not necessarily the amount so much as the symbolic support. And I think that brings us to the next question, which is, why isn't that support there right now? It's because of the engagement and the communication issues that need to be figured out first in future dialogue and conversation, because I would love to get to the point where we can provide that symbolic support. I don't want it to come across with everything that I said, that I'm just a, I'm a nimby, and I don't want any of these things ever, because this isn't our problem, and we've done enough. That's not what I'm trying to communicate at all, it's about establishing open lines of communication, and being able to do what we have within our right as a local government to do right by our community.
Well, and I'll add to that, there's things that were shared with us tonight that I had no idea of, and that alone helps, understanding that there is other things happening, we don't know that. And so, you know, this work session should be another work session, we should have more of a dialogue, but I do think, you know, we obviously can't finish this topic tonight.
And I asked for some information on what we're doing. I guess part of two is that, having applied for many grants myself, the statement is, when you get from a funder, what is the city doing? That's a little bit loaded. I don't know what they mean by that. You know, and I'm sure you, I don't know, if you ask them, what do you mean by that? I mean, we are assuming. Yeah. So I mean, but, you know, again, it's a loaded question. The thing that I keep coming back to is, you know, if I could wave my magic wand, every community should have a facility that, for lack of a better term, I mean, you're not quite a navigation center, you're somewhere in between where you are, where Father's Heart is now, and what a navigation center is. Every community should have that. All those other people from other places in the county should be going to wherever their communities are, they should not be coming here. We need to take care, you know, I'm being a little nimby here, we need to take care of our people, the people that are living in cars, the people that are doing whatever. You know, it's not that I don't care about the guy that's coming in from Portland, but they have facilities in Portland. Please use your facilities in Portland. Let's try to manage the people in our own community that we need to take care of, you know, as a community. And, you know, when people are coming in, you know, they had something on OPB the other day about some guy who came in from Texas, because he heard things were better, you know? Yeah, bless his heart. Stay in Texas, you know? Let's take care, let Texas take care of Texas people, and let's see how we can do with the people we have here that are our community members, that are not quite as, they're visible in the community, but, you know, we don't know all their circumstance. I mean, again, if I could wave my wand, because I think we were making great progress on that. And in talking to my friends at 12th and Washington, I know that we were making progress, and then all of a sudden, they have people they've never even seen before, they don't know who those people are. And that's, again, where we're having some behavioral issues. But like Commissioner Smith said, I don't think we're going to solve that issue tonight, but, you know, again, maybe the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County needs to have Clackamas County other people on it. He's on it, from Oregon City, West Lynn, Lake Oswego, wherever, all those people need to be engaged in the conversation, because otherwise, we're just talking to ourselves here. And again, it's, you know, because when it's called Clackamas County, I'm assuming it's Clackamas County. I'm also concerned about what you just said. I just, I happened to just see the blurb, I didn't get to read the whole thing, and I am really concerned. Again, have we had any communication from our friends at Clackamas County about this, and how it's going to affect all of our cities? I don't think so. You know, that is a conversation that, you know, at least a heads up. Are you trying to pull up the Oregonian article? So, on this particular topic, since it was on the agenda, do we have any communications that came in regarding this particular topic from public members that we need to read later?
Nothing before this meeting started, I haven't had a chance to check since.
Okay, just wanted to know. All right, well, I think we have to continue this, and I'm going to adjourn the work session. I thank you guys for coming, and we'll let you know when we're going to do this, so you can come back. So I'm going to adjourn this, and let's reconvene at 7:00. What does the atomic clock say? At 7:19. Okay, let's reconvene at 7:25.